Are you ready?
Turn your mic on.
Thank you, sir.
I will call the Tuesday, August 7, 2018, meeting of the Broken Arrow City Council to order. And do we have, do we have someone to give the invocation? All right. Then we'll move on to roll call, please.
Here.
Parks, here.
Lester, here.
Udi, here.
Thurman.
Please join me, please join Counselor Wimpy as she leads us in the pledge.
Attention, salute, pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, well, moving on to item five, consideration of the consent agenda. Are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion second being made. A roll call vote, please.
Wimpy.
Yes.
Parks.
Yes.
Lester.
Yes.
Udi.
Yes. Okay. Moving on to item six, there were no items removed from the consent agenda, so moving on to item seven, consideration, discussion, and possible approval of and authorization to execute a proclamation declaring August 7, 2018, as Purple Heart Day in the city of Broken Arrow. And I believe that's Jennifer.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and council members. Jennifer Hooks, Community Liaison. On August 1, 2017, the city council approved a proclamation declaring the city of Broken Arrow as a Purple Heart City in recognition of the service and sacrifice of the men and women of Broken Arrow who have served our country. And we would like to remember this special day by issuing a proclamation each August starting today. So I'll turn it back over to you to read the proclamation. And Mitch Reed's gonna come up.
Thank you. Well, it's my honor to read this proclamation that says, whereas, the citizens of Broken Arrow have great admiration and deep gratitude for the men and women who have selflessly served their country and this community in the armed forces. And whereas, the Purple Heart is the oldest military decoration in present use and was initially created as the badge of military merit by General George Washington in 1782. And whereas, the Purple Heart was the first American service award or decoration made available to the common soldier and is specifically awarded to members of the United States Armed Forces who have been wounded or who have made the ultimate sacrifice in combat. And whereas, the contributions of the men and women from the city of Broken Arrow who served in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedom and way of life enjoyed by our citizens. And whereas, the city of Broken Arrow appreciates the sacrifices our Purple Heart recipients have made in defense of our freedoms and wishes to acknowledge their courage by honoring and supporting them. Whereas, the city of Broken Arrow was named a Purple Heart City on August 1, 2017. Now therefore, I, Scott Udi, Vice Mayor, on behalf of Craig Thurman, Mayor of Broken Arrow, do hereby proclaim August 7, 2018, as Purple Heart Day in the city of Broken Arrow.
Thank you, gentlemen and ladies. I appreciate it and everything. On behalf of Purple Heart, I'm honored to accept it. I went to an event today in Oklahoma City and all everybody asked me was, how many more cities in eastern Oklahoma are you gonna make Purple Heart Cities? And I said, as many as I can find. But it was an honor to do Broken Arrow last year.
We'll get a photo.
You gotta follow up with you.
For better or worse.
Thank you.
So, how many do you have, Mitch? How many cities do you have?
I've done eight cities here in eastern Oklahoma and everything, so I'm only working on one more, but I have done two universities. But there are sixteen in Oklahoma now.
Good for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we need a motion for that? I guess. I make a motion, we approve the proclamation declaring August 7, 2018, as Purple Heart Day.
Second.
Motion is second being made. Is there any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Wimpy.
Yes.
Parks.
Yes.
Lester.
Yes.
Udi.
Yes. I'm sorry, I got jumped ahead. I was excited to share that proclamation because my own grandfather, having earned a Purple Heart, it means a lot to me. So, with the next item, item B is consideration, discussion, and possible approval of and authorization to execute a proclamation declaring August 11, 2018, as a 73rd anniversary celebration of VJ Day in Broken Arrow, Oklahoma. Jennifer?
Yes. VJ Day, otherwise known as Victory Over Japan Day and Victory in the Pacific Day, is a day that commemorates Japan's surrender during World War II and thereby bringing an end to the war. Celebration of this anniversary of the historic VJ Day gives us the opportunity to reflect on the past and renew our patriotism so that we may continue to live in freedom and seek peace so that our veterans will not have died in vain. This proclamation proclaims Saturday, August 11, as the 73rd anniversary celebration of VJ Day in Broken Arrow, and there will be a ceremony Saturday morning in Veterans Park. And I will turn it back over to you again, and we have Dr. Oliver here to accept the proclamation.
Thank you. It's my honor to again read this proclamation. Whereas, VJ Day, otherwise known as Victory Over Japan Day and Victory in the Pacific Day, is a day that commemorates Japan's surrender during World War II and thereby bringing an end to the war. And whereas, on August 6, 1945, the United States dropped the atomic bomb Little Boy on Hiroshima, Japan, and on August 9, dropped the atomic bomb Fat Man on Nagasaki, Japan, acts that resulted in the Japanese formally surrendering to the Allies on August 15, 1945, a date ending World War II, and followed when that condition was made official on September 2, 1945, with the signing of the Japanese instrument of surrender aboard the battleship USS Missouri in Tokyo Bay. And whereas, in the announcement of final victory for the Armed Forces of the United States and its allied nations, defending the cause of liberty, justice, and freedom, the most terrible and devastating war known to man in history came to an end. And whereas, our ancestors shaped the structure of our political system, laid the groundwork for long-lasting traditions that enriched our heritage and fought and died for our nation in order to help preserve the freedoms and rights guaranteed to all people under the Constitution of the United States so that future generations would have freedom. And whereas, the celebration of this anniversary of the historic VJ Day gives us the opportunity to reflect on the past and renew our patriotism so that we may continue to live in freedom and seek peace so that veterans will not have died in vain. And whereas, this world-inspiring and most significant event is occasion for appropriate celebration, for rejoicing, for tribute, and thanksgiving. And whereas, in view of the city having created a veterans park where patriotic and other events may be conducted, the occasion is recognized as an event endorsed by the city of Broken Arrow and may proceed without participants incurring expense or providing liability insurance during the time of the event. Now therefore, I, Scott Udi, Vice Mayor of the city of Broken Arrow, Oklahoma, due with approval by the city council of Broken Arrow, Oklahoma, hereby proclaim Saturday, August 11, 2018, as a 73rd anniversary celebration of VJ Day in Broken Arrow, Oklahoma. And I urge all people in Broken Arrow and the surrounding metropolitan areas to join with veterans of all wars, along with those now serving and who have served in peacetime assignments in celebration of this anniversary, of the historic occasion at an observance that day in Broken Arrow's Veterans Park and witness whereof, I have heretofore set my hand and caused the seal of the city of Broken Arrow, Oklahoma, to be affixed this 7th day of August, 2018. And I would entertain a motion in that regard.
I'd make a motion to approve the VJ Day proclamation and authorize its execution.
Second.
Motion second having been made. Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Wimpy.
Yes.
Parks.
Yes.
Lester.
Yes.
Udi.
Yes. All right. Moving on to item 7C, public hearing, consideration, and possible action regarding PUD 278 and BAZ 2008. Parks' property, 4.69 acre CH and A1 to CH and RE, PUD 278. And I believe that's Mr. Curtis.
Vice Mayor, Council. Plan unit development, PUD 278 and BAZ 2008 involve a 4.69 acre parcel located one-half mile north of New Orleans Street, east of First Place at 2303 South First Place. Applicant is requesting that the zoning on the property be changed from A1 and CH to PUD 278 slash CH and RE zoning. The reason for the proposed zoning change and PUD is for the future development of the property for one additional residential home to be placed on the property. The property was annexed into the city limits of Broken Arrow on March 15, 1971 with ordinance 383. Property is proposed to be for a single-family use divided into two development areas. The permitted uses in Development Area A, which is on the west quarter of the property, are office general, general personal services, retail general, multifamily dwelling, office warehouse, grocery, and/or permitted farmer's market, and restaurant or food preparation and distribution. The permitted uses in Development Area B are for one single-family detached residence. The RE zoning requested with BAZ 2008 is considered to be in compliance with the comprehensive plan in Level 1. In their meeting on July 12, 2018, the planning commission recommended approval by a vote of four to zero for PUD 278 and BAZ 2008 per staff recommendation. No one spoke to this item at that meeting. Staff recommends approval of PUD 278 and BAZ per planning commission and staff recommendation, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Are there any questions? Okay. I believe the applicant has stepped out, so I will, we have one person who wished to speak in opposition to this item, and if I'm reading this crack, I'll be, it's Jeff Ivors.
Yes, I came down to the city a few weeks ago.
If you could state your name and address for the record.
Yes, Jeff Ivors, 2121 South First Place.
Thank you, you have three minutes.
I came down to the city a few weeks ago and tried to find out information about what was planned for this parcel. I was wanting a diagram that showed where they planned to put things. I was unable to get that information. I was shown a map that had that parcel divided into two parcels. One, the parcel with the bond company on it, was my understanding that they were wanting to put a house behind that. Years ago, when I bought my property, I was told that I could not put a second house on the property unless there were separate driveways. In order to put a driveway on that parcel, you would have to go either between it, the bondsman and the neighboring house, or on the other side of the house. I don't think there's room for a 10-foot driveway on either side. Plus, that driveway would be going through the parking area of the bond. So, I don't see a way to do this and adhere to city requirements that have been communicated to me in the past. That is the nature of my concern. If that's indeed a single property, then are they planning on bringing the driveway in from the south side and sharing that with the house that's already there, which I understand is against the rules? Or what is really planned on this? And I'd just like to know that all the city requirements are being met before they approve and build something on this.
So with the application as a PUD, which means that the applicant has a little more latitude in some areas and the city requires additional requirements that it wouldn't normally require for a single-family dwelling, so this is just to change and allow for the PUD, the applicant still has to move forward with the site plan and all those, some of those answers that you may require.
Okay, will that be done before construction begins?
Yes. Mr. Curtis can address that.
Okay. Well, I, it's been years since I have gotten involved in applying for permits for building and that sort of thing, and I don't, didn't remember the sequence of events down here. And so my concern was that they were proceeding without the city taking a good hard look that requirements were being met, so.
Yeah, it's just, it's agriculture now, they're changing it to a more multi-use with the office still in the front and adding the house. But Mr. Curtis can come up and address some of your concerns.
Okay. Thank you.
You can go ahead and come up, Larry.
Yes, this is very unique. The property was located in Tulsa County years before being annexed into the city of Broken Arrow. And in fact, at the time, whenever it was annexed in 1971, the Bell's Bondsman Building was already in place and was used as a plumbing shop at that time. When it got annexed in and then back whenever it was brought into the comprehensive plan update back in 1998, we ensured that at least the structure that was currently there being in compliance with the comprehensive plan, that's why it has Level 4, and the remainder of the property is Level 1. The PUD, the gentleman is correct, that there are some, there are regulations in place and separation lots of land and things along those lines. The PUD restricts the property from ever being divided into the future, so no new lot will be created any time in the future. This is, this locks it in, no future development may be, no lot may be split off from there. But what the PUD does allow is that we have number of lots that are very long, very narrow, and that provides a restriction on future development. So, it is a hope that this being the first PUD within this strip, that this will help guide the development of this area in the future on if there is any future new home development, that this will be a template that could be used for those lots as well for proper development within the city.
So, to answer maybe part of his question, when it comes forward, the issues with the driveway and how they gain access to the house in the back will be addressed.
Yes, the proposed driveway will be along the south side of the property. The current house is there, has a drive, so there will be a shared access point along the, along from, for that, for that house, and then also for the property towards the back. They will use a shared access point for that, that's a part of the PUD that's being requested today.
Okay. So, when it comes forward, then they'll address the issue on the drive?
May I make one comment? You're gonna end up with three properties on what are currently shown as two parcels with access for one of the properties on the north parcel being from the south parcel. Seems to me like you're creating a scenario where it's gonna be extremely difficult to sell any of those properties in the future, and that is a huge concern, I think, going forward.
Well, part of the, what they're trying to do is because the lots are so deep, is maybe creating under the PUD scenarios where other people can build houses in the back of their properties as well. It's not just, just for this one property, it's create opportunities for the other property owners in the future to better utilize those deep lots.
Well, I was told at the city in the past that if I wanted to build a second house on my property, I had to have a separate driveway, or I had to build my driveway to the standards of the city street. That's what I was told in the past.
Yeah, I've never heard of that, but.
Well, this has been in 89 when I bought the property, so, you know, maybe things have changed.
Mr. Curtis, can you speak to what the rules are now?
Sure. In standard zoning, the gentleman is correct, that we, we have standard requirements for lot frontage onto a street, and so therefore, the lots have to have so many feet in order for, to ensure quality of access with driveways, utilities, things along those lines. As the utilities are already located there, and as the applicant will be moving forward with the dedication of the utility easements and the dedication of the right-of-way along First Street, those will be accomplished as this project moves forward. But the driveway can be shared, it, this is what the PUD is bending, basically, not necessarily bending the rules or breaking the rules, this is what's creating a change in this particular lot for its zoning, is for the additional ability to have two, two houses using essentially one driveway for this, for this particular use.
And, and any future applicant on any property similarly situated back here would be able to make the same request and the same modification?
Exactly, is that, this could be used as a template for them, for any of those properties to perhaps use it in a similar manner in the future. They could look towards this as an, as an example of approved, or as a recommended development pattern.
And this particular option may not have been available in 89, but it is now.
Correct.
Okay. I just wanna help our, speak, our questioner understand why he may have been told one thing 30 years ago and is, or, gosh, almost 40 years ago, is being told something else now. I want him to understand that, and, and that's, my understanding is the PUD allows for this.
Correct.
But it would be available to anyone else, if it was approved by council, would be available to anyone else who wanted to also develop the backsides of these narrow lots.
Correct.
Okay.
May I ask one last question?
Yes.
If the driveway is coming from the house on the south side of what I perceive to be two parcels and are shown here as one parcel, and it allows access to a house behind the business that's on the north half of this parcel, or north parcel, then when that house in the south is sold, it is being sold with a right of access to any future owner granted to the existing person in this new house.
This lot is one parcel, and this PUD locks that the bonds, the bonds building, the houses existing, and that any future house, they will have to be sold together. They cannot be split, they cannot be sold any differently, they have to be sold together. Period. There is no lot space.
So that's, that's one of the requirements to the PUD you wouldn't normally have with a regular lot. One of the, the benefit of allowing for that dual drive is the benefit to the landowner, the requirement is they can't ever sell that property except as one partial.
Correct.
Which answers your question.
That's my question. Certainly it raises another concern. I can't imagine anyone ever wanting to come in and buy all three of those.
That, that is, that would be, that would be the owner's challenge, not, not, yeah, I, I agree, but that would, I understand, but that would be that owner's challenge and something for a future owner who's wanting to do something else to consider if they're wanting to do it.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other questions for Larry?
Thank you. Thank you. Make a motion to approve PUD 278 and BAZ 2008 per planning commission and staff recommendation.
Second.
Okay, motion second having been made. Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Wimpy.
Yes.
Lester.
Yes.
Udi.
Yes. Could someone let Counselor Parks know? Moving on to item D, presentation and discussion of newly enacted state statutes and Oklahoma Department of Health rules governing the sale and regulation of medical marijuana following passage of state question 788. And Trevor gets the joy of presenting this one.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Udi and Council. As you know, in June 2018, Oklahoma voters passed state question 788, legalizing medical marijuana within the state of Oklahoma. Several things have occurred as a result of that vote. The first is, Oklahoma Department of Health was charged with drafting regulations to implement this state question. Their first attempt to draft was adopted in July, it was about 75 pages. You might have seen in the news, there was a lot of concern over overregulation, things such as restricting the sale of smokable marijuana, requiring pharmacists in each of the dispensaries, and setbacks from churches, things of that nature. As a result of those concerns, there was a revision, and on August 1, 20, pages of regulations were adopted by the Health Commission that were actually signed by the governor yesterday. So, this is a rapidly evolving area of law. Tonight, I'm not going to try to go through all the regulations and rules, I just wanted to educate the council on some of the issues that we'll be facing the city in the very near future and set out a timeline for that. So before we get to the slides, what I wanna note in terms of timing, the Department of Health is supposed to accept applications for medical marijuana license holders, those who can use medical marijuana, also for their caregivers, for dispensaries, those, that's where the marijuana would be sold, for the commercial growers, that's where the marijuana would be growed, which would be sold to the dispensaries for sending out to license holders, and also for processors. Those are folks who would process marijuana into edibles, things of that nature. The deadline is August 25, 2018, for the Department of Health to accept applications, and they should begin to issue licenses by September 8 of 2018. So this is coming upon us very shortly. With that in mind, on August 30 of 2018, a special planning commission meeting has been scheduled, and at that meeting, Development Services has proposed and has drafted some zoning recommendations to address where the medical marijuana dispensary should be located within the city of Broken Arrow zoning. One of the issues of 788 was that cities and other municipalities cannot opt out of 788, meaning it's not an option to have a blanket prohibition on medical marijuana dispensaries. So, by law, they're going to be allowed. The only issue for us to decide is where would they be zoned and what does it make sense in terms of where they should be located. And Development Services has worked on that issue along with the legal department, and those recommendations are gonna be considered by Planning Commission on August 30. Before then, on August 21, city council will meet again, where I will have a preview ordinance that would govern the permitting process for medical marijuana dispensaries and also potentially for growers and processors. And that'll give the council an opportunity to look at some different options in terms of regulating the permitting process, what we want for applications, what do we need to know about, and also manual fees, what types of fees that we'd like to charge, things of that nature. And then on September 4, following the special planning commission meeting on the 30, council will be able to review for final adoption the permitting process ordinance and also consider the planning commissioner's, commission's recommendations on locations for the dispensaries and potentially for processors and growers. So with that timeline in mind and kind of as outline, a map of where we're going, I wanted to get a little bit into the law, just so everyone can be fluent in what we're talking about, of what we'd be regulating. So, what exactly does medical marijuana do? So, let's see, I'm actually at the very end. Can you bring me all the beginning, giving my first slide? Ah, there we are. So first, we have to start with medical marijuana license holder. So, under the law that was passed, basically, a person who's issued a valid medical marijuana license can consume marijuana legally, they possess up to three ounces of marijuana on their person, they can grow six mature marijuana plants, have six seedlings, have one ounce of concentrated marijuana, and then possess 72 ounces of edible marijuana, and possess up to eight ounces of marijuana in their residence. I'd like to provide a caveat and say that marijuana is still illegal under federal law, and this state law question has not changed the status of marijuana being illegal under federal law, and we are not impeding or keeping the federal government from enforcing the federal law that prohibits it. However, what we are required to do under the state question 788 is to enact ordinances in compliance with 788. So, the first step in the process is, is those who need medical marijuana, they go to the Department of Health, they get a license, and that's what they're allowed to do with the license. There's also provision for a caregiver's license. Basically, if someone is a medical marijuana license holder and they're homebound, they can't get to a dispensary to purchase their marijuana, they can have a caregiver go to the Department of Health and apply for a license and get a medical marijuana caregiver's license, and that gives them the rights as a medical marijuana license holder, they're not, not using it, they're using, they're obtaining the marijuana to give to a licensed And so, as I mentioned, marijuana is still illegal under federal law, but obviously there have to be changes to state law if we're going to allow medical marijuana, and specifically, what the state has done is they've made the possession of up to one and a half ounces of marijuana by persons who can state a medical condition but they don't have a state-issued medical marijuana license. can't get to a dispensary to purchase their marijuana, they can have a caregiver go to the Department of Health and apply for a license and get a medical marijuana caregiver's license, and that gives them the rights as a medical marijuana license holder, they're not, not using it, they're using, they're obtaining the marijuana to give to a licensed And so, as I mentioned, marijuana is still illegal under federal law, but obviously there have to be changes to state law if we're going to allow medical marijuana, and specifically, what the state has done is they've made the possession of up to one and a half ounces of marijuana by persons who can state a medical condition, but they don't have a state-issued medical marijuana license. Basically, it's a misdemeanor offense, and that can only be fined four hundred dollars. So the statutory regulation is basically, if you have a medical marijuana license, it's legal for you to have all those types of marijuana I showed you on the last slide. However, if you've not gone through the process to get a license and you still have one and a half ounces of marijuana or less, you won't be arrested for that. It's a four hundred dollar fine, and it's, and, and that's, that's all you can do under the state law. In addition, all of the paraphernalia rules have had to be rewritten under the state question seventy-eight, seven eighty-eight. No device that's used for the consumption of marijuana, for medical marijuana, can be declared illegal. And you'll see later on, on the agenda, there's two preview ordinances that reflect those changes. The first ordinance will reflect the change of the possession of marijuana if they state medical condition and they have one point five ounces. It reflects a fine of four hundred dollars, and it also repeals the paraphernalia restriction for medical marijuana. It does still keep a class A misdemeanor offense if you have marijuana and you can't state a medical condition and you don't have your license. So the process to license medical marijuana was developed by the Oklahoma Medical Marijuana Authority. That was created by the Oklahoma Department of Health. As you can see, this is one of their forms here for physician recommendation form. So one of the requirements for a medical marijuana licensee is they have to get a recommendation. It's not a prescription because marijuana is, can't be prescribed. It's not recognized as, as a medicinal drug by the federal government. It's still labeled as a Schedule One, meaning it has no medical use or purpose according to the federal government, so a doctor can't prescribe it. So that, what they do is they'll make a recommendation, and this is the form that they'll use to make the recommendation. As I talked about, there, there at the bottom, there's a certificate of necessity of the caregiver, so that's the caregiver license process that I discussed previously. Once the form is completed, there's an online process, it's not even in paper. You have to go to the online portal that they have and fill out your application. It's a hundred dollar fee, they have to submit their recommendation form along with the fee, and then the Marijuana Authority has two weeks to process the application, and they either have to accept it or deny it. So those are the licensees, so those are the folks who are actually, will have the marijuana and are using it. And the second question then comes about, well, how will medical marijuana users actually obtain their marijuana? So one of the options that we talked about on the first slide was they could actually grow the marijuana themselves. They're allowed to have six plants in their own home if they have a license. So that's one option. The second option would be to purchase it from a medical marijuana dispensary. The dispensary licenses are also processed by the Department of Health. There's a twenty-five hundred dollar application fee. Those applications will also be accepted on August the twenty-fifth. The Department of Health has two weeks to approve or reject those applications, and that's the process that they've adopted. The only really, real restrictions that, that the Department of Health has on the location of dispensaries at this time is you cannot have a dispensary located, the entrance of a dispensary located within one hu, one thousand feet of a public or private school. And so I know Development Services is looking at creating a map to, to, to show on the recommended zoning where that would actually be located, considering the number of schools that we have, and so that is the only restriction that they, that they really have on the locations for dispensaries. The next category that potentially could be in the city are medical marijuana commercial growers. So the dispensary license does not allow the dispensary to actually grow the marijuana, it allows them as a point of sale for the retail sale. They have to obtain it from a licensed commercial grower. Commercial grower applications are also set up through the Department of Health. Those applications will be accepted on August the twenty-fifth, licenses could be issued as early as September the eighth. The Department of Health has several pages of regulations in terms of how the growers can operate. It's notable under the law that there is no restriction on the amount of marijuana a commercial grower can grow, so there's absolutely no limit. Also, there's no limit on the number of commercial growers or dispensaries that can be located within the state. There's absolutely no, no restrictions or legislation on that. It's these types of issues that have made a lot of folks call for a legislative special session to have specific rules and regulations. As you can imagine, most of the communities who have instituted medical marijuana have, you know, thick regulatory books. Right now, Oklahoma has a twenty-page slim volume. So I do expect this to be a rapidly evolving and growing area of law with further regulations. One thing of note is that under state question seventy-eight, seven eighty-eight, municipalities cannot unduly restrict the locations of medical marijuana dispensaries. There's no similar language for commercial growers. As such, it would be a choice for council to decide whether or not they want growers, commercial growers to be allowed within the city, or potentially not to be in the city, or to have a compromise on, on where they would be located. So that will be one issue that, that will need to be decided, both at the Planning Commission and by council. The same holds true for the marijuana processing licensees. Again, that's more of an industrial, my understanding is more of an industrial-type program where they would create things that are called edibles. Those are candies, or cookies, or other types of goods that you consume that are infused with the active ingredient of marijuana, which is THC. Along with the other licensing requirements is a transportation license. Obviously, folks will have to transport the marijuana from the commercial grower to the dispensary for then distribution. Those are also regulated by the Department of Health. And as I alluded to, the zoning issues are really what we're going to have to be faced with, in terms of where are we going to allow the medical marijuana dispensaries. As I said, the specific law under title sixty-three, section four twenty-three A F restricts municipality from unduly changing or restricting zoning laws to prevent the opening of a retail marijuana establishment. And then, again, the only specific restriction on their locations found in the law was a thousand-foot restriction for public and private school entrances. And then obviously taxation is also an issue that will have to be addressed. So if you read the language of state question seven eighty-eight, it has a specific provision about a seven percent, what they call a sales tax. And so there's been a lot of questions of, well, is that the only tax that will be collected? Will cities and municipalities be able to collect their sales tax? Unfortunately, the Oklahoma Tax Commission will be regulating and collecting this, and they've not issued an official position. They have made statements from their spokesperson, and this is what I've gathered from the news media. Basically, what their spokesperson has said is that since there's not been a specific statute that exempts medical marijuana from the collection of sales tax, that the sales tax will be collected. So the way to look at it would be, there'd be a seven percent, which the Tax Commission is considering as an excise tax, similar to what would be collected on a liquor store. And in addition, on top of that seven percent excise tax, which is specifically designated for funding the marijuana regulatory agency, you'd be able to collect the local regular sales tax, which is approximately eight percent and a little bit more than, I think. So you'll have an effective sales tax rate of approximately sixteen percent for the medical marijuana. There is some question about the wholesale level. The taxes are only specifically for the point of sale for the dispensaries. So I'd need a little bit more guidance from the Tax Commission on whether or not the commercial growers or processors would be subject to any sales taxes. With that, I didn't entertain any questions that you might have. As I said, there is little regulation of this at this point, and I know a lot of cities are struggling with how to implement this law, and so I think I'd like to give a lot of credit and recognition to Mr. Skates and Mr. Curtis and Development Services. They've, they've really taken a lot of effort in developing potential solutions on, on the zoning issues.
So, let me start. And I know we can't put the feathers back in the pillow, but I, I've got a number of concerns. Number one is, I, I look at Oregon, who is producing five times the amount of marijuana that they have consumption. So what's going to happen with all of that? I mean, they're not going to just grow it and throw it away. So that's one. We can't limit the number of dispensaries, but can we limit the, both the location and the zoning where they go, like they'd have to go in industrial? Because I can tell you, I, I represent two property owners that have already been approached about growers. I've cautioned them that this is going to be something that likely will have a lot of bankruptcies. So I, I certainly told them to go in a different direction. The other is, I noticed that the, one of the state requirements is that they get their prescription from physicians, though the actual law says board-certified physicians. My brother's been a physician for forty-five years, he's not board-certified. So does that mean when the police stop somebody and they have a certificate, we just going to let them pass, or do they have to show proof that it was a board-certified physician? Is there a quantity of the marijuana that a producer can grow, and how do they account for that quantity? And, yeah, that, I think that's all my questions right now.
Sure, and I'll do my best, if I, if I may, take those in order. I do have a little bit of information. I don't think I can answer all your questions satisfactorily, we just, we just don't have enough information. I think your concern about Oregon is well-taken. They've found that a lot of their marijuana is being flooded onto the black market, and so it's, like you said, you can't put the feathers back in the, in the pillowcase once it's out there. I think that one of the ways the Department of Health will try to prevent the leakage of, of the plants or the marijuana onto the black market for recreational use is inspections. There's provisions for inspections and auditing and accounting for the amount of marijuana that's being grown, and all that's done at the state level.
So, so do, do we have control of who has a license, and can we require licenses for growers, so we know who's growing?
So we don't control the licensing at the state level. So in order to have a dispensary, a commercial grower, or processor, or to be a medical marijuana user, you have to get a license at the state level. What we can control is issuing permits on who can have a dispensary or a permit for the grower or processor, and make sure that they comply with their zoning requirements. In terms of limiting the number of dispensaries, like I said, we're not, I don't believe that we can, under the law, as it's written, we can have reasonable and do restrictions on where it's located, and that's what Development Services is working on. So we can't outright ban it. We also would be prohibited from exacting zoning regulations, which would have the effect of having an outright ban on the dispensaries. I don't believe that that also applies to the processors or the commercial growers. I believe that we would have the opportunity to not allow that to be zoned in the city.
I presume we can limit, because since this is retail activity, the, the dispensing of, of these drugs, since this is retail activity, we could limit it to retail locations. We, we could, we don't have to permit someone to open a dispensary out of their house, I would presume.
Sure, absolutely. We can have, and my conversations with the Development Services is focused on where does it make sense, how does it make sense to treat a dispensary? You know, some analogies have been pharmacies, some analogies have been liquor stores, some analyses, you know, depending on how you want to look at it, could be, you know, as a, as a Walgreens. So those are all the things that they're looking at. So yes, we certainly can, can designate where it would be located. In terms of your third question, Councilmember Lester, about recommendation from physicians, that'll be controlled by the Department of Health. So the, the form.
There's going to be our police officers that are the ones that are frontline.
And it'll be a card, I, I think it'll be a card. I've not actually seen what the department's going to issue, but if you looked at the slide that I'd had for the physician, if you could, that's, that's, that's the form the physician will fill out, and that form will not be carried by the patient. That form will reside with the Department of Health. And so the Department of Health will actually issue, I assume would be something like a driver's license, similar to that, to each medical marijuana license holder. So that's what they would have to show our law enforcement officers. We just would have to trust the Department of Health that they've enforced the regulations.
Sure. Let's go with that.
And then your last question about the quantity of marijuana grown in a commercial grower, according to the specific language of state question seven eighty-eight, there's no limit on the amount of marijuana that can grow. And that's what the language said, and that's what was voted on by the people. So, and how do they account for it? The Department of Health, I believe, at least my understanding of their regulations, should be doing audits and should be, you know, like I said, they went from seventy-five pages of regulations to twenty. In the initial version, they had to have testing, potency testing, making sure that it was within range limits for THC. All those were done away with, with the twenty-page regulations. And my understanding, it was partly at the recommendation of the Attorney General about whether or not the Department of Health actually had the power or ability to make some of these rules and regulations. And again, that's why the call for the special session has been made, so that we can have some more guidance, or clear guidance on, on how this will work.
Yeah, I've been reading that it is going back, and the legislature can make changes. So some of the things you mentioned tonight could be changed, even the zoning application and whatever, where it can be, the legislature can come in and make changes to what we've been talking about tonight. Is that correct?
Yeah, absolutely. And like I said, this is a rapidly evolving area of law. It, it's not been fully regulated at the state level. We need some guidance.
A big concern of mine is things like, it's pretty easy to test for if someone is inebriated by alcohol, if they're operating a motor vehicle or, or equipment under the influence of, of this type of substance. How do we test for that? What kind of training are we having to give our police officers and to deal with this? This is broader than just zoning. How much money are we having to spend to implement this project, this statute?
You know, those are all great questions. In terms of testing drivers, you know, you're probably familiar with the intoxicilizer. That's the, what you'd think of when someone's pulled over for DUI and when they have to blow into the, the, there's not a similar device, you know, for marijuana. You can do blood testing to determine THC levels.
Doesn't that require a, reasonably so, because the constitutional protection, but doesn't that require a warrant or something like that that would basically, I mean, this is what's concerning me, is you have people who are operating vehicles under this, with this in their system.
Sure, and I believe it'll be a continuing challenge, as it has in law enforcement, that has legalized medical marijuana. One of the, the options, obviously, we have, you know, drug-driving laws. You could be under the influence of a prescription drug, you could be under the influence of enough NyQuil, so to speak. And so we all, we can rely upon the observations of our officers in the field as well. But that, I, I agree with you, Vice, Vice Mayor, it's, it's a challenge, and I don't know if we have a good answer for you, and I think that's something we'll have to work closely with our law enforcement to, to come up with some solutions.
Well, I think with what Mike was saying on the commercial properties, since it is federally legal to sell marijuana, you, you probably won't even get title insurance, because you can't, can't get that on the properties where people are wanting to come in and buy these buildings to sell and grow and all of that, and, yeah.
Very good point.
Plus, the banks cannot accept the money, so that means they're going to be more subject to armed robbery because of the large sum of money.
Yes, research I've done, it's usually cash business. They can't even take checks. The banks don't want to get involved and accept the money because they could lose their charters. And so that's another concern in terms of, you know, where these are located. You know, California's experience is they'd had, had issues with folks congregating and, like you said, robbing some of these places. So those are concerns.
I, I also, does our sovereign immunity extend to defending, I mean, this is still illegal under federal law, and we're facilitating this, essentially, we're acting as facilitating the sale of an illegal substance under federal law. Do, does our immunity extend to protect the city from those kinds, that kind of litigation or illegal, or legal threat?
No, that's a great question. The research that I've done on this, and what's, what's considered by the council's action is we're not facilitating or telling people to, to do this, okay? It's, we're engaged in, in zoning and land use restrictions. So one of the caveats that I've drafted, that I've seen in what other cities have done is, is this, and this, this helps, and it basically says, nothing in this ordinance is. is intended to permit or assist in the violation of either the Federal Controlled Substances Act, or Oklahoma's Uniform Controlled Dangerous Substances Act. Furthermore, nothing in this ordinance is intended to prevent or frustrate federal and state enforcement of any laws or regulations applicable to possession, use, or distribution of marijuana, or acts as a defense to the commission of any act prohibited by federal or state law. So, I've not seen any city council, or state legislature, or any other governing body be indicted federally for putting in zoning regulations in accordance with a, a state question for medical marijuana. But it's, it's a point well-taken, and, you know, as an attorney, you probably appreciate, this is an area fraught for practitioners, to give advice to anybody, because it is illegal under federal law, and we obviously can't advise people to break-
The Oklahoma Bar Association is recommending that its members contact their malpractice insurance providers to verify that they are giving proper, I mean, it, it's, it's, it has a lot of, I think, unintended consequences. I think the final thing I had is, is I had visions, and this is what worries me, is I'm taking my, my children and wife out to dinner, in, in, for example, the Rose District, and, and people are sitting on the sides of the street smoking marijuana, and I've got to try to figure out how I don't let my nine-year-old get a contact high. Can we still regulate smoking in public and things like that? Is that something we're still able to do for health purposes, so that we, does that make sense?
It does make sense. And so the guidance that I've seen on this is, we already have a state law that governs the use of tobacco in public places. And that prohibits basically indoor smoking. Also allows, you know, businesses to also ban, you know, smoking. One thing that, that the current, and, and it's been, my understanding from the Department of Health is, they, they will enforce this, the use of smokable marijuana as they would for tobacco. So, all the provisions that we have for the use of tobacco would apply to marijuana users. One thing that's not clear to me, though, is there is no ban on the use of tobacco in parks. There is no ban on use of tobacco on a public street. I don't see, at this point, any state law that would then prohibit the use of a medical marijuana user in, in public. I'm not saying that that's going to be allowed. It's an area that we need further guidance from, and, and maybe some more, more work from. But what I can tell you is, the marijuana would be subject to the smoking in public law for tobacco, and may be subject to additional restrictions for the health and safety of our population.
Tell that to my nine-year-old when she's craving Cheetos. Are there any other questions?
Oh, so many.
Are there any questions tonight?
Good job of answering, you know, a man, a small amount. I just see so many changes to it, you know, on me, it's just gonna be a work in progress, as you say.
I, I agree, and I think that's why you've not seen, really, any community attempt to have a cohesive regulatory scheme yet. They, they're working through it, you know, they're waiting, I think, for additional guidance. Again, the governor only yesterday signed the final rules for the Department of Health, who's supposed to be taking these applications by the twenty-fifth. So everything is, kinda on fast-forward, and, and, you know, when we do that, things can sometimes fall through the cracks.
Any other questions?
Thanks, thanks Trevor. Thank, it was expensive, I knew it would be an interesting discussion. All right, we'll move on to item seven E, presentation discussion regarding recent training presentation given to the Planning Commission. And I believe that is Brent Murphy.
Oh, sorry.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, councilors. Last month, I gave a presentation to the Planning Commission on the roles and responsibilities of the Planning Commission and planning, and it was requested that I make the same presentation tonight to the, to the council, some of these things you're gonna be very familiar with and so forth. But this is just a short presentation, and tried to maybe answer any questions that you may have. As far as zoning, it got its history started back in nineteen twenty-two. That was with the Village of Euclid versus Amber Realty case, in which Amber Realty had gone through and had acquired a lot of property that they planned on using for industrial purposes. The Village of Euclid adopted regulations that said, hey, this part of that land can only be used for residential purposes. As a result, there was a lawsuit, and the lower court actually ruled in favor of Amber Realty at the time, but this went on to the Supreme Court, and the Supreme Court decided that the city and towns do have the authority, through their police powers, to regulate land use, that they can govern what can go into areas, they have the power to help protect the area through allowing only residential areas and, and certain areas, that the regulations could be adopted that limit apartment buildings or multifamily from certain areas. So, this became the beginning of zoning regulations. I think it's very clear, and, and one of the items that the Supreme Court ruled is that the value that's lost in, in property, because Amber Realty sold industrial land for a lot more than they could for residential purposes, was irrelevant in this case. So that was the beginning of zoning regulations that happened in nineteen twenty-two. As far as in Oklahoma, state statutes that deal with zoning are entitled eleven, that what is, would apply to the City of Broken Arrow's far as cities and towns. And the Planning Commission's responsibilities are, they are to prepare and maintain a general plan. We've had four comprehensive plans that have been adopted in Broken Arrow, we're in the process, as you know, working on our fifth. They are to hold public hearings for any proposed zoning ordinance changes, where there's a change in the document and so forth. Planning Commission conducts a public hearing, and then they bring forth a recommendation to you. They also hear items where somebody's wanting to change the zoning on their property, they conduct a public hearing, and they provide information to you and a recommendation as far as changing the zoning on property. They review all the subdivision plaques that come forth to the city, and again, they give you a recommending, recommendation to you as far as the plating of property, as well as the catch-all phrase, they can do anything to help guide and future development in the city. We have a comprehensive plan that basically, it serves as a roadmap for any type of future development. It creates goals, objectives, and policies. Goals are very broad statements that identify kinda where the city wants to go, objectives, refine those slightly, and then policies are specific statements identifying how to achieve the goals that we want to achieve. We're gonna see some of that coming forth in the future comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan serves as a guide for future development, lets people know what's expected on each of the areas of property in the city. When somebody comes in and they're looking at buying a piece of property, and there is a open field right behind them, they can look at the comprehensive plan and be able to see that that's proposed to be used for residential, commercial, or industrial uses. So that way, they know what is intended for that property in the future. It clarifies as far as future land use expectations. When we have somebody that comes into staff, and they say, hey, we're interested in doing this on this piece of property, we don't have to evaluate what the surrounding land uses are. We have officially adopted document that we can share with them, saying, this is what is proposed for this property, and this is what is allowed in accordance with the comprehensive plan. Comprehensive plan also establishes the future road network, identifies where the primary arterial streets are, and those are the ones that are hundred-and-twenty feet in width as far as the right-of-way, as well as the secondary arterial streets, and those are the ones that are a hundred feet in width. It has a utility plan as part of it, and that's going to show where all the major utility lines are proposed to be located in the city. Our comprehensive plan is one showing up here, it divides the city into seven levels of land use intensity. And each one of those levels identifies what the zoning classifications are considered to be in accordance with the comprehensive plan. Level one, which is more the green area that you see, that's kinda on the outskirts of the city, that's for agricultural, very low-density zoning classifications. It's usually in areas where we don't have any sanitary sewer service available. Level two's a more traditional urban residential, that's a single-family type development, it also permits duplexes and office development, O-N-type zoning, when it's adjacent to an arterial street. Level three's referred to as the transition area, that's the area that kinda serves as a buffer between commercial uses that are normally located at arterial street intersections. And then you have level two, or the urban residential on the interior of the square mile. And so, level three kinda serves as a transition, it can consist of multifamily duplexes, as well as additional single-family development. Level four is gonna be more your commercial uses that are located at arterial street intersections. Level five is for the downtown area, and is, is restricted strictly for it. Level six is the regional employment node, that's where you have, the areas that you see up here in the light pink, or, excuse me, light purple, is primarily along the arterial, excuse me, along the expressway corridors, and we do allow in those areas, light industrial when it's done as a PUD. I remember when we were working on the comprehensive plan, the council was very concerned in having light industrial uses adjacent to the expressway corridors, wanted some type of control, so we didn't have a lot of outdoor storage, and it became more of a business park. And I think that has worked well over the last twenty years. And then the last level is the most intense one, and that's in level seven, that allows for light industrial as well as heavy industrial uses. When we developed the comprehensive, back up one, when we developed the comprehensive plan, we used this as a model, in which we had for square mile, having level four on the arterial street intersections, buffered around level three, and then level two in the middle. We had to make adjustments based upon topography, what other zoning decisions that had already been made, we made the policy that we weren't going to downzone anybody as part of the comprehensive plan. So there was adjustments and so forth made as we came up with the overall comprehensive plan. And again, we tied it strictly to the zoning ordinance, so when somebody comes in and they're in level two, they understand what zoning classifications they can see. The implementation tools for the comprehensive plan, we have zoning ordinances, subdivision regulations, as well as the engineering design criteria manual. The zoning ordinance is divided into five different districts, we have agricultural, residential, office, commercial, and industrial. Each one of those are then defined with subcategories as far as the different classifications as far as zoning. We, as part of our zoning ordinance, there is a, each use is identified, what you see up here, any of the areas that are in white, that use is not allowed. If it has a P with it, then that, that type of use is permitted, and if that is the zoning classification, then anything that has a P with it is allowed by right. There are other uses that are referred to as specific use permits, in which those types of uses need a little bit further review by the Planning Commission and by the, by the city council. It may be cases where you can be good in some areas, but it may not be relevant or a good use in other areas. So specific use permits give you the opportunity to review those with a little bit further refinement than a use permitted by right. The zoning ordinance has with it is parking regulations, we identify both the minimum number of parking spaces that are required, we also identify the maximum number, and that's a hundred-and-twenty-five percent of whatever the required number of parking spaces is. What that does is help to prevent large parking lots from coming in, that never are occupied by vehicles and so forth, so we, we give it up to a hundred-and-twenty-five percent can come in, and that's permitted. We have landscaping requirements that basically require one tree per fifty-linial feet along the arterial streets, as well as in the parking lots. We also have landscaping requirements when we have residential, commercial uses or industrial uses of a, but, single-family residential, they're required to do landscaping in that area. We have lighting standards as far as for parking lots, which is two different methods. You can do a, what's referred to as a pole standard, in which you have to limit the height of the pole, depending on how close that is to the property line, as well as you can also do photometric, that will identify, by photometric, what your light levels will be. Either one of those are acceptable. We have sign regulations that regulate the height and size and location of freestanding signs, as well wall signs that can take place. There's access controls on the arterial streets, which basically, access has to be at least two-hundred-and-fifty feet apart on the same side of the street, if it's on the other side, it has to be at least two-hundred feet center line to center line. We have design requirements that pertain to commercial and industrial development, that when they're along an arterial street, they had to be a masonry-type material. And then, non-conforming uses is where something was in conformance with the zoning regulations, something changed, and that is no longer permitted. That can continue to exist, but it cannot be expanded in any manner. And as a result, if the business or use ceases operation for six months or more, that use cannot go back in on that property. So a legal non-conformity allows them to continue to exist, but they cannot be expanded in any manner. We had the zoning maps that identify each piece of property, what the zoning is on, on that, that's available online for people to be able to go and look at. As far as the rezoning application process, an application is submitted, the applicant has to come in with a list of property owners, that comes from either a title company or an abstract company of everybody within three-hundred feet. If it is a multifamily-type application, that has to be everybody, all the property owners, within a quarter of a mile. We place a legal notice into the newspaper at least twenty days prior to the meeting, and again, we send out a mailing at least twenty days prior to the meeting. And the notices identify the case number, hearing date, its location, and its time, what is being requested as part of the zoning change, legal description, and then we provide a, a map that shows the location of the property. And then in addition, we place yellow signs that identify, a notice that there's a zoning change that's taking place. And this is an example of what we provide when we do the mailings out to the surrounding property owners. There's a public meeting that's conducted, whenever there's a zoning change, the notices are sent out by, by staff. We talked about with the Planning Commission that they need to avoid any ex parte communications, having conversations outside the public meeting, that if somebody approaches them, says, hey, I have a new item coming in, I'm gonna be doing a rezoning, and this is the best thing that's ever happened to Broken Arrow, they need to avoid those conversations, as well as somebody from a neighborhood comes up, says, hey, we're greatly concerned about this rezoning in our neighborhood, our neighborhood wants to have you come and see us. We advise the Planning Commission to avoid those, because they need to hear everything at a public meeting, and all the information is presented to them at that time. We prepare the agendas and the actual reports that go to the Planning Commission, also that comes to the city council. We make a presentation at the meeting, and after staff has made their presentation, the applicant has an opportunity to speak, and once the applicant is through, the chairman opens up the public hearing. And our Planning Commission does a wonderful job in that matter. They keep control of the meeting, they make the applicant come forward to the podium, they listen to the information that's presented to them, and then when everybody's had an opportunity to speak, the chairman will close the public hearing, and then the Planning Commission will take the information from staff, they'll take the information from the applicant, and they take the information from the surrounding property owners, and they make a decision on what they think is best for the community. And one of the things that we pointed out to them at the meeting, that there's something they don't feel like is appropriate for City of Broken Arrow, that includes some information as to why that they don't think that's appropriate, and that's things that Trevor then can use if that ever goes, goes any further. They do make the final recommendation, and that does come forth to you as part of the final approval process. We have subdivision regulations that are used to implement the zoning requirements. We make sure that subdivisions are properly designed, and that they have improvements there, because the city's responsible for the long-term maintenance after the subdivision has been constructed. Plating process also establishes land records, it's much easier to describe a property as lot one, lot two, seventy acres, than it is to do a meets-and-bounds type description for every piece of property. So, once a plaque gets reported, it is, becomes an official land record. As far as the plating process, there's a conceptual plan that comes into staff, we sit down with the applicant, and it's very general, it just kinda shows the layout of the streets, it shows the general lot configuration, and if we have any comments, we relay that on to them at that time. The applicant then proceeds with the preliminary plaque, and that goes to the technical advisory committee, which is made up of staff members, as well as members from the, all the utility companies and the school districts. And the plaque then goes on to the Planning Commission, they have with it, there'll be conceptual engineering plans that are reviewed by our project engineer, and the preliminary plaque looks something like this, it shows the overall layout, streets, the lots, and so forth, kinda the general what is taking place. That goes just to the Planning Commission. The third step is the conditional final plaque, that goes to the Planning Commission and to the city council, that is what comes forth to you. I think you had a conditional final plaque on the agenda tonight. And that has a checklist usually with it, and there'll be something like this, there'll be- There'll be a final plat that has the final engineering plans and so forth associated with it. It can be done in phases. And the final step is that the applicant will make all the changes that are required by staff that were approved by the council. They'll get letters of approval from all the utility companies. They'll bring the plat in. We'll check, make sure all the items have been addressed. And then they pay their fees, post their bonds, and the plat is then recorded in the county, and that becomes an official record. So in summation here tonight, we kind of assessed the Planning Commission's role, the conference of plan and how it functions and its purpose, the zoning ordinance. It's what it contains and how it can be modified. And then briefly went through the subdivision process. I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Are there any questions for Brent?
I don't have a question as to complement the staff and the Planning Commission. Having served 10 years on the Planning Commission, theirs is a lot longer meetings. Theirs are more controversial meetings. And a lot of the questions that citizens have, and they need to be answered, are usually answered at the Planning Commission level. So I, my hats off to staff and the Planning Commission for help answering that and making the quality city that we have, and the citizens' questions answered. So I appreciate it.
Thank you. Anything else? All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to Item 7F. Presentation regarding update on the city's street maintenance program funded through street sales tax, and that's Rocky Hinkle.
Good evening, Vice Mayor. Good evening, Council. Rocky Hinkle, Director of Streets and Stormwater. Tonight, I want to give you a quick overview on how we plan to utilize the street sales tax fund for road projects adopted in the FYE 2019 budget. Although given the storm tonight, it's probably more appropriate to talk about stormwater projects. First, I want to identify the projects that are, that we identified for contract work, projects we identified utilizing city resources, and the importance of identifying street segments versus overall, sorry. All right, the importance of identifying street segments versus subdivisions, and then the criteria we use to identify those street segments. The first project here for contract work is the Wolf Creek subdivision. It's scheduled to bid August 20th. It is a concrete panel replacement project with a budgeted amount of 1.6 million. The next project is Central Park Estates. It's a carryover from 2018. This is actually a combination of work between city resources and contract work. Once our city resources finish up some of the work in the neighborhood, the remaining of that work will be contracted out with a budget amount of 350,000. The next project is what I'm calling Concrete Package Number One. It is a concrete panel replacement project that the budget amount is $484,000, and it consists of the Vandiver Sixth, Aspen Pond, Forest Ridge, Melissant Pond, Southbrook, and Stacy Lynn subdivisions. Next, we have the Wedgewood Second Edition Concrete Panel Replacement Project with a budget amount of 394,000. Then we have 23rd Street, Kenosha to Albany, which is a preventative maintenance project. Budget amount is 195,000. And then the city-wide striping, which was before you tonight for, to award the bid for lane markings and striping with a budget amount of 290,000. And then finally, we have these last two, the Arrow Springs subdivision, which is asphalt rehabilitation with handicap ramps with a budget amount of 945,000, and Hidden Springs Edition with, which is also an asphalt rehabilitation program, project with a budget amount of 400,000. Moving on to projects where we utilize city resources, tentatively speaking, Indian Springs subdivision asphalt rehabilitation project was scheduled to start this week, waiting on the milling contractor to, to mobilize to begin milling operations with a budget amount of 300,000. The Angus Acres subdivision, which is also an asphalt rehabilitation project, is scheduled tentatively to begin the week of August 27th with a budget amount of 155,000. Next is the New Tulsa Estates, same week of, to begin with. It's also an asphalt rehabilitation project with a budget amount of about $200,000. Kenwood Hills is also scheduled the week of August 27th, which is an asphalt rehabilitation project, budget amount of 145,000. And Foster Lewis is also scheduled to start that week. Again, asphalt rehabilitation project with a budget amount of 125,000. The next project there is Carriage Crossing, which is a concrete panel replacement project with a budget amount of 50,000. Cedar Springs, concrete panel replacement, budget amount 50,000. 6100 Center, concrete panel replacement with a budget amount of 15,000. And the annual street maintenance just consists of various projects throughout the year with a budget amount of 100,000. And then CrackCeiling, again, it's various locations. It's a preventative maintenance project with a budget amount of 138,000 and the annual sidewalk maintenance, again, various projects with a budget amount of 75,000. So totaling up, the amount of contract work is about 4.7 million dollars, which is approximately 78% of the budget amount. And city resources will be doing about 1.3 million or 22% of the budget amount. Talk about the importance of street segments versus subdivisions. There are two examples identified in the budget as just Angus Acres subdivision and the Foster Lewis subdivision. I've taken the liberty to drive these subdivisions and identify particular street segments. One, you know, a street segment is more specific. Using the subdivision is pretty vague. It's important for two reasons. One, it'll allow us to be more precise with our estimates in the future when we bring recommendations to council for the future budget. And number two, it allows us to coordinate activities with other departments like engineering, utilities, to, to see if there's any conflicts with future transportation projects or any waterline replacement projects. So those are just two of the subdivisions I, I use. But I identified every subdivision there. I identified every street segment that we will be doing work in. And then finally, talk about the, the criteria we use to, to identify these street segments. We use a consultant that drives every one of these streets and puts together a payment management index report, and it tells us the, the overall ranking of each street. And it's basically on three criteria. One is the roughness index, which is how many bumps there is in a mile. And then the, the pavement condition, which is basically any cracking, potholes, or ravelling, or anything of the like. The pavement condition is, is the one that the public likes to, to use because it's more visible to the eye. The, the overall index, it takes into account a 3D image laser, so it identifies any subgrade failures or subgrade or subbase issues. So the calcu, the overall index is calculated by 33, 33% of the roughness index and 67% of the surface distress index. So in most cases, the overall index is going to be lower than what the pavement condition reflects. So we like to use the pavement condition because perception is reality. So with that, I'll entertain any questions or comments.
And what is our current PCI?
Around 70.
What do you estimate we save on city projects versus contractor? So a city crew doing a project versus what would it cost for a contract crew?
Oh, probably anywhere in the ballpark between 15, 20%.
Rocky, talk a little bit about how the recommendations we're going to make to council on the use of the, the neighborhood maintenance funds in the bond package where the, where the street maintenance you just talked about is going to be for certain types of work. And we've talked about using the, the money that's in the bonds for more of those rebuilds because several council members have talked about it's great to keep those streets that are on the higher, on the higher end, but what are we going to do about those streets that are down at the bottom that definitely need to be rebuilt?
So, so the threshold is around anywhere, you know, 50, 55, and an index below. For all intents and purposes, it's a lost cause for maintenance. So then it becomes a reconstruction project. So we identify these projects for maintenance anywhere from that 55, 60 range and above to, to maintain.
You said the individual subdivisions, they would be identified, that were identified here, that certain streets would be identified. Can we have a copy of those?
Absolutely.
And the streets that are below the 50 mark, is there some game plan for long-term rehabilitation of those?
Yeah, those, those are the streets that we'll coordinate with engineering to, to identify for reconstruction. And some of those are in the bond.
In my city manager's message for this year, I mentioned that we're trying to come up with a, a more systematic approach to how we're going to spend those funds, as well as how to spend those funds that we're going to get from the bond. Obviously, the first couple of years of the issuance, thinking positively, we're going to focus on the, the road, the road widenings and the intersection improvements. And then we're going to be able to get into those neighborhoods. But in order to keep that pavement index condition where we're supposed to be nationally, where we're at right now, it takes a combination of both. And so what I want to be able to do is every year as a part of the budget process is to bring the, the streets that we're planning on doing for that fiscal year to the council. You'll see that because they're going to show up in the financial newsletter that we put out around Labor Day every, every year. And so I wanted the council tonight mainly to not only hear what, what we have planned, but also to make sure that you, you know that we are following up with your directive as to address those streets that need, that need that extra attention.
Mr. Spurgeon is exactly right. The combination of, assuming the bond pass, passes in the street sales tax will accelerate the overall index of our roads.
Well, if I'm, I'm sorry. If I understand correctly, a PCI of 70 is very good.
It's good, yes.
But in order to be maintained, we have to be strategic about which roads we replace, which roads we fix, and how we schedule that out, which is, I think.
And, and I want to make sure that those roads that are in the worst condition are certainly being addressed and have some timeline. Because it's hard for us, and I voted for this process, but to, to go out and tell the citizens, well, we know your road's the worst, but we can come out ahead by fixing the better roads first to keep the index up. A lot of times, the road's getting really a lot of disrepair, and it damages cars and stuff. So I just wanted to make sure that those are on the list and being repaired orderly because, you know, sometimes the citizens just have problems with that.
I agree.
Let me add to that, council member, is that this year we're estimating, according to finance, about 3.6 million dollars for this, for the sales tax. And all that money goes for actual work on roads, sidewalks. None of it goes for any, paying for any personnel. It's all for actual construction. And we're going to be spending probably 2.6, 2.7 million dollars on actual work. And then we're going to be doing things like striping, which are important for traffic safety. So tonight, council awarded a contract for a larger contract than we probably will do every year because there was a lot that Mr. Swab said we needed to get done. But we're also going to be using those funds for concrete to help with doing concrete work and curbs and sidewalks in areas where we're doing the work to try to do a more holistic job of, of actually improving the areas where we can that's, we're allowed to do so. Very similar to where we did the micro-surfacing on, on Aspen from 91st to 101st. We went in and we installed sidewalks completely in that mile stretch. So now there's some sidewalks on both sides for a mile. And so we're really trying to take a more comprehensive approach about how to really go in and try to do things one time and then not have to go back unless it's actual maintenance. Are there any further questions for Rocky? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right, we'll move on to Item Eight on the agenda. Citizens' opportunity to address the council. No one has signed up, so we'll move on to Nine. Item 9A, General Counsel Business. Consideration, discussion, and possible approval of and authorization to execute the fiscal year 2018-19 labor agreement with Fraternal Order of Police Lodge Number 170. Jeanette.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, councilors. Jeanette McCormick, HR Director. The city's negotiation team began negotiations in March of this year with the Fraternal Order of Police Lodge Number 170. And on July 19th, the lodge membership ratified a proposed agreement. The proposed agreement provides for administrative revisions to the educational compensation and tattoo policy articles, clarification to the existing management rights article language, increase in the monthly compensation for master's degree, an increase in the working out of classification incentive pay, a 2.5% base wage increase for all bargaining unit members effective July 1st, 2018, and then an additional 2.5% base wage increase for all bargaining unit members effective January 1st, 2019. Staff recommends that the council approve the labor agreement for fiscal year 2018-19 and authorize its execution. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Are there any questions for Jeanette?
Make a motion to approve the labor agreement with Fraternal Order of Police Lodge 170 for fiscal year 2018-19 and authorize its execution. Second.
Motion to second having been made. Is there any further discussion? Sing that roll call vote, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Moving on to Item 9B. Consideration, discussion, and possible approval of BAZ 2007, RDS Business Park. Larry Curtis.
Vice, Vice Mayor, Council. BAZ 2007 has a request to change the zoning designation on a 19.70 acre parcel from A1 Agricultural to CN Commercial Neighborhood. The property, which is vacant and unplatted, is located one-quarter mile north of Kenosha Street, east of 23rd Street. The property was annexed into the City of Broken Arrow on February 4th, 1980 with ordinance number 817. Property is presently designated as Level Four with the conference of plan. CN zoning requested with the BAZ 2007 is considered in compliance with the conference of plan in Level Four. According to the FEMA flood maps, none of the properties located within the 100-year floodplain. The Planning Commission, their meeting on July 12th, 2018, concurred with staff, recommended approval by a vote of four to zero for BAZ 2007, subject to the property being planted. Three, three people spoke regarding this case. They expressed interest in the future road layout and were concerned about any road being extended through the Camino Villa neighborhood to the east. Staff recommends that BAZ 2007 be approved for Planning Commission and staff's recommendation. I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Larry?
You know, I had a question, and I certainly don't want to open a can of worms, but looking at the, the long-range planning for the City of Broken Arrow. I know the school was built, looking at, the school just to the east, east of this property, looking at Hillside Drive continuing on through. In our long-range plan, does Hillside Drive still continue all the way through?
I don't recall that, that portion of the east side study is still in, in effect. I know that there was a time when the city was interested in continuing the road of Hillside Drive through that area, but it was, the city backed off on that, on that project. We had received a preliminary plat with this project that did show a stub ending near Camino Villa, but that plat has been rescinded. They, they removed, they retracted that plat, and they will be submitting a new one. Those citizens that wore Camino Villa did come out and did make their concerns noted as a part of that. But at the time, we didn't have anything to provide them saying definitively if the road would be going through or anything along those lines, but.
Well, I think from, from what you said, though, that the road's not going to go through from this plat I'm just talking about in the long range, you know? That Hillside Drive has been in the plans for, for many years.
Right.
To travel from the Bass Pro area to the Walmart. And I just wonder what that, the long-range plan, if it was still in there or not. I know it's not for this particular one.
Right.
And for the configuration of this development, it's got a cul-de-sac on the east end.
Yes.
Which could possibly somewhere down the road allow for a sub-street to go through.
Potentially, yes. Depending on how the developer lays out, the remainder of the laws, again, we hopefully will have a new preliminary plat to assume, to be able to answer those questions regards to that.
So there, there's no anticipation that a PUD would be with this?
It's? No, there is no anticipation of a PUD at this time.
Any other questions? entertain a motion on the matter?
Make a motion to approve BAZ 2007 as recommended by the Planning Commission and staff.
Second.
Motion second having been made. No further discussion. I'd ask for a roll call vote, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Item 9C. Consideration, discussion, and possible approval of and authorization to execute Resolution Number 1113, the resolution of the Broken Arrow City Council declaring approximately 5.2225 acres of city-owned property surplus. Mr. Stevens?
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Norm Stevens, Economic Development Coordinator for the city. In your packet and the fact sheet, you have a quite extensive amount of information in reference to the north side of Tiger Hill, which is the area we'll be talking about tonight. Just to refresh your memory a little bit, in 2015, I was approached by representatives of Tiger Hill Plaza LLC. And that ownership, ownership group consists of Brian Hendershot and Steve Wallman. And Mr. Wallman is here tonight, and they were interested in purchasing the developable property on the north side. Following their offer to purchase it, city staff made a recommendation to council for construction of a modified soldier wall in front of the original retaining wall. And then after further due diligence and, and working with the buyers, people, it was discovered that the ingress and egress to Tiger Hill would be difficult with the layout that they were doing due to the existing elevations. Over the course of months, we continued negotiations with the buyers and reached consensus on an amount of drop on that site that will, that will do what they need to have done without greatly increasing the cost of the modified soldier wall. The actual amount that's being sold is provided at 5.225 at a cost of 1150 per square feet or $2,616,158. What we built into this as we are moving through, we didn't want to get one part of the process of looking into the soldier, modified soldier wall, or the buyer doing their due diligence with one side getting ahead of the other. So we very systematically laid it out that the city will have 75 days to design and go out to bid for the modi, I'm sorry, for the soldier wall. We have encumbered in the last budget $1.8 million to pay for that modified soldier wall. If at that point, at the end of that 75 days, we do not, the authority or the council does not notify the buyer that we are terminating the agreement, that is the triggering event for them, and that allows the buyer 120 days to go out and do their due diligence on that site. Five days after that triggering event, which is starting on their 120 days, they will have to put in $100,000 into escrow for that property. At the end of that 120 days, or any time prior to that 120 days, if the buyer notifies the city and says, we're ready to go, everything looks good, at that point in the contract that engineering will do with the buy, or with the people doing the construction of the wall, they will go out and begin construction, or at least go onto the site and begin setting up to start construction of the wall within 10 days of that period. Our goal is in no way to do this agreement today and then that piece of property set empty for years on end. That property's set empty for way too many years already, and it's time to get this thing moving forward. I'm going to ask Director of Engineering and Construction, Alex Mills, to come up. Talk to you a little bit about the process, if that's okay with you, Vice Mayor, of the modified soldier wall.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, council. Thank you, Norm. We anticipate receiving the 90% construction plans of the modified, modified soldier wall next week. Council authorized an amendment to the original agreement back on July 3rd. The consultant's been underway, and those plans should be in our hands for final review next week. And I would anticipate being able to go out to construction towards the end of the month, possibly the first of the next month.
So the, the design, the 1.8 million that we have allocated to put the soldier wall, does that account for the lowering of the elevation as well?
That was the hope, yes, sir, is that they, that would handle the cost of the wall. But until we bid it, we honestly don't know how much it's going to cost.
But that was your goal?
That's our hope, yes, sir. Any other questions?
And your construction time on the wall, once it's?
I, I think we're anticipating about 90 to 120 days, but, you know, if we go out to construction towards the end of September, by the time you get a contract in place, you're starting to get into the winter months, and then it's a little bit of a crapshoot, depending on what weather does to you, but I would think 90 days would be a reasonable expectation.
Is the soldier wall a similar type material, or is it a cast-in-place?
Well, it's, it's concrete piers that are drilled down to, to bedrock, and then concrete panels that are put in between those piers.
Pre-made concrete?
Yes, correct.
But they will be designed to match the, I mean, not match, but at least dovetail with the current wall?
The aesthetics will be similar to the texture of the existing wall, yes.
Are there any other questions?
Thank you.
I make a motion to approve.
Can I, I'm sorry, sir. Can I stop you for just a sec? I just want to.
Am I voting yes to?
I know. But we've put a lot of time into it at this point. I've never stopped a council person before. If it is okay, I would like to ask Mr. Steve Wallman to come up. He is one of the principal owners, or the buyers of that property. He has a brief presentation and a video that he would like to show as he's coming up, if at all possible.
Actually, I thought he was enjoying the length of the councilman. He would actually vote to put his off to the end.
Good evening, Mr. Vice Mayor, councilors. Thanks for your time and consideration. As you can see from the 3D rendering that W Design put together, despite some of the issues and delays and logistics we've been dealing with, we've obviously spent a lot of time trying to make sure that the project that we envision fits with Broken Arrow is well thought out, and, and we're prepared to go when the conditions on the site and subject to the costs of the wall are all identified. We're hoping to move forward with this type of project. As you can see, essentially, it consists of two buildings with a quiet area or a soft point in the middle for patios, congregation. We intend to have some lighting, as you can see, other elements that soften up the line of the shopping center, give it a little bit more upscale, inviting aesthetic. We did have two pads to the west. Based on the reengineering of the soldier wall, we had to grade away from that and make some changes relative to our building footprints. And currently, we have one 45,000-foot pad versus, versus two 30, 35,000-foot pads. So we've tried to adjust to address and minimize the cost to the city and to ourselves in tying in the soldier wall and our project. And so, yes, thank you, Norm. I guess Shay, you can run to maybe the other PDF if we could, although I don't tire of driving through this personally. Again, W Design put together some of the working plans that we have been working on. Again, this is an elevation. Next one, Shay. Another one, we can scroll, we won't take a whole lot of time. As you can tell, we're using different colors, different textures, different materials. You know, when I did Lynn Lane across the street, we did a little bit to just kind of make it pop a little bit more than some of those retail buildings, or tended to be slightly generic, wasn't given a whole lot of identity. Here we want, because of the elevation of the property and because it stands out, we want to highlight the aesthetic and, and the architectural nature of the building. And so, again, we're spending more money and doing more things to try and accomplish that. Please. Again, soft spot. I won't go through these since we just did the 3D. I probably won't put that thing right there because it blocks signage, but it looks good. Let's go to the site plan if we could, just to show the, keep clicking.
The first slides.
The first one? Yeah, here. So now we've, to address the soldier wall, as you can see, we've got a grade away, we're grading away from that soldier wall, creating some parking up there. We staggered those two buildings just a little bit based on ingress and flow of the building. And there's that pad I was mentioning to the west. The light blue, sorry if that's not the right color I'm saying, but I'm a guy, so light blue to me. Those show the restaurant massing. So we've got restaurants in our middle courtyard, one on the hard end cap, one on the west end cap, and then a south, a small restaurant with a drive-through and a stack lane. The purple are retail spaces. There may be a little bit of movement in maybe some of those restaurants, just based on demand and square footage, but essentially, we think we're going to see that much restaurant concentration on the site. And I think we've addressed that, the flow going on, on to both arterials and how to manage that kind of volume, because we are anticipating and certainly optimistic that they'll be doing plenty of business. Next one. This just shows again the square footage of the lot, the overall square footage of the property. Go to the next one. And that's what it looks like now. Yeah, that, this one just represents the letters of intent that we are currently have working or leases. You know, as you know, this time doesn't, time is never the friend of a developer and, or especially a leasing agent. And so, you know, keeping deals in place for 12 months is, 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 is an art, actually. But I'm not sure I have it, but I try. So as we move forward and we're able to contract on the property, given the timing, and in order not to get in each other's way, we've worked out a scenario where we're not spending large amount of monies during a contingency period, and the city isn't painted into a corner because they've got obligations under a contract. So we think with Norm's hard work and Kenny and the rest of the city, that we've worked that timing out to our mutual agreement. And therefore, this timeframe works for us. As we control the property, we're going to start actively bringing our leases to, or our LOIs to lease. We have interest in essentially 50% of the property. I don't have a sign up, I'm just soft-marketing those things. But our intention is to bring full service, fast casual food uses, more services and soft goods to the market. And obviously, this is a retail node of North Broken Arrow, and Lynn Lane's essentially full, you don't have a lot of vacancy. We want to continue to create that excitement on the intersection, and we believe Tiger Hill Plaza might do just that.
Can you tell me, are there going to be any chicken places?
We have four chicken LOIs.
That's all I needed to know.
Pfizer us, no, I won't go down that road. No, no chicken restaurants. Do have several nationals on the pad and one or two nationals that are on the end caps. And then we have one or two locals, which I think is important to continue to have that, that local flair as well.
Sure.
I was wondering why so many of the people in the 3D look like Welton, though.
Isn't that funny?
How that works.
He also had, he actually had sound overlays for when you were in the courtyard, which was impressive. So cut that.
So your timeframe, you think, Stephen, from development, from starting to completion?
I anticipate, you know, we've got a nine to 10-month building window. You know, we'll try and get dried in and get our tenants turned over so that they can be doing interior finishes as we complete, substantially complete the building. You know, we've got an allowance in there for a couple of months, especially since we're going to be kicking through the winter. And when I stick a shovel in the ground, believe me, it does immediately snow and freeze. So we've got allowance for that, but we think we're probably looking at 10 months as a general window.
Are there any other questions? Norm, do you have anyone else you want to speak?
I just want Johnny to do what he wants.
Well, I'm anxious to sell it. We've had this thing for a long time, so I'm anxious to get started on it. I have no questions.
We'll go ahead and make your.
I'll make a motion that we approve and authorize execution of resolution number 1113.
Second.
Motion second having been made. Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Wimpy.
Yes.
Parks.
Yes.
Lester.
Yes.
Udi.
Yes. Moving on to item nine D. Is consideration discussion and possible approval of and authorization to execute resolution number 1116, a resolution of the Broken Arrow City Council authorizing the city legal department to file an action in district court to obtain a decree ordering the abatement of a public nuisance. And this is Trevor.
I was going to let Larry do this one, I think you want to. But thank you, Vice Mayor and council. This is a mobile home that's in Camila, Camila Villa, 2701 East Norman Place. You may recall, this property was before you, I think, two councils ago, where there was an appeal by the property owner of the hearing officer. And as you recall, that, that appeal was denied. The resolution before you authorizes legal department to go forward with a district court action. Those are allowed when it's not reasonable to go forward with summary abatement considering the issues surrounding this property and make sure everybody's properly notified. We'd request that you authorize us to go to district court on this case.
Are there any questions?
Make a motion to approve resolution 1116 and authorize its execution.
Second.
Motion second having been made. Any further discussion? Seeing none, a roll call vote, please.
Wimpy.
Yes.
Parks.
Yes.
Lester.
Yes.
Udi.
Yes. Item nine E, consideration discussion and possible approval regarding PUD 279, Sound Mine, 14.16 acres, and located one half-mile north of Tucson Street, west of Aspen Avenue. And this is Larry.
Yes, Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor, council. Sorry, I was trying to ride on the cocktails of Norm and his strong success. Planning and development, PUD 279 involves a 14.16 acre parcel located one half-mile north of Tucson Street, west of Aspen Avenue, north of the Creek Turnpike. Property is currently unplatted and undeveloped. BAZ 1848, a request to change the zoning from A1 Agricultural to CG Commercial General, was approved on this and adjacent property by the city council on July 20th, 2010. BAZ 1848 was approved such that the property being platted, with the exception of the area platted as Aspen Creek Town Center One to the northeast, the remainder of the property remains platted. Sound Mine is a proposed health care facility and commercial development. As part of the development of the property, West Norfolk Drive will be extended to the edge of the Sound Mine development. The remaining right-of-way for the western portion of Norfolk Drive will be dedicated along during the plating process. First phase of development will be the Sound Mine Behavioral Health Hospital with the commercial developments to the east to begin at a later date. Property is shown in the Conference of Plan as Level Six. Development proposed with PUD 279 is considered to be in compliance with the Conference of Plan in Level Six. In their meeting of July 26th, 2018, the Planning Commission recommended approval by a vote of four to zero for PUD 279, per staff recommendation to be approved. Staff recommended approval, subject to property being platted. Three people spoke, spoke at the meeting with questions regarding the compliance of the South Mine Behavioral Hospital with state certification, the future extension of the Norfolk Drive, and protection of the floodplain. It is staff's recommendation that PUD 279 be approved, as approved by Planning Commission and recommended by staff. And I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
Are there any questions?
The applicant is here, if you do have any questions as well, for the applicant.
Would the applicant like to speak?
Happy to answer questions.
I, I assume you, you agree with the recommendation by city staff?
We do, and we've enjoyed working with them and problem-solving, and we think the project remains a wonderful project that we're all enjoying.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Make a motion to approve PUD 279 per Planning Commission and staff recommendation.
Second.
Motion is second having been made. Seeing no further discussion, a roll call vote, please.
Wimpy.
Yes.
Parks.
Yes.
Lester.
Yes.
Udi.
Yes. Moving on to agenda item 10, preview ordinances. Item 10A, consideration discussion and possible preview of an ordinance closing an alleyway on property located one mile south of Kenosha Street. Trevor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor and council. Item 10A before you is seeking to close 1.20 acres of an alley that's on block 18 of Old Town of Broken Arrow. Advocate wants to close the alley so that they can construct a new mixed-use structure development services. Had reviewed the request, and they recommend that you preview the ordinance and set it for adoption.
Any questions for Trevor?
Make a motion to preview the ordinance and set it for adoption.
Second.
Motion is second. Roll call vote, please.
Wimpy.
Yes.
Parks.
Yes.
Lester.
Yes.
Udi.
Yes. Item 10B, consideration discussion and possible preview of an ordinance repealing Chapter Four of the Broken Arrow Code, Article Five. Trevor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor and council. As you may recall from our last council meeting where I had the presentation on the alcohol ordinances that are going to effect on October 2018, this is the beginning of implementing the provisions of that state question, 792. the provisions of that state question, 792. If you look through the preview ordinance, this particular ordinance basically removes all the low-point beverage ordinances, because low-point beer doesn't exist anymore under Oklahoma law. It's referred to as alcoholic beverages. And so, the preview ordinance before you basically repeals all of the ordinances related to low-point beer and alcohol beverages will be addressed in the next item of 10C. So, staff recommends you preview the ordinance and set it for adoption.
Make a motion to review ordinance and set it for adoption.
Second.
Motion is second. Roll call vote, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes. Item 10C, consideration discussion and possible preview of an ordinance admitting Chapter 4, Alcohol Beverages, Article 1.
Trevor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor and Council. This is a companion preview ordinance to 10B. This regulates alcohol ordinances, alcohol use in the city of Broken Arrow and the sale in accordance with the state question that goes into effect in October. As you can see from each of the previews, that it amends Chapter 4 for offenses by members of the public to update it to reflect the state question for spirits in public. And it also repeals the rest of the outdated language. It also updates the offenses by licensees or employees of the ABLE Commission. It reduces the age a retailer can employ, a person that's 18 years of age or older, for selling beer or wine, and then they have to be 21 years of age or older to sell spirits that previously had been 21. And it also updates the offenses of licensees or employees for operations a certain hours and certain days. One of the changes that we talked about is the county may have a vote that allows sales of alcohol on Sunday that hasn't been conducted yet, but the ordinance recognizes that if that, in fact, happens, then they will be able to be open on Sunday. It also changes the hours of operation in accordance with the state law. And finally, we also updated the taxes and enforcements of licensing provisions to have all the fees reflected in the manual fees instead of the ordinance, as we do with the other fees. The staff recommends that you preview the ordinance and set it for adoption.
Make a motion to preview the ordinance and set it for adoption.
Second.
Motion is second. Roll call vote, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes. Item 10D, consideration discussion and possible proof, preview of an ordinance submitting Chapter 16, offenses miscellaneous, Article 1.
Trevor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor and Council. As I mentioned in the medical marijuana presentation, one of the changes that we had to make to our criminal law was for the consumption of medical marijuana no longer being illegal. This preview ordinance reflects that change. It also reflects the change that if somebody has 1.5 ounces of marijuana or less, but they don't have a medical marijuana card, they can only be fined $400. Otherwise, the violation would be a Class A offense, and that would stay in effect. This brings us into compliance with state question 788. As such, we recommend that you preview the ordinance and set it for adoption.
Motion?
Make a motion to preview the ordinance and set for adoption.
Second.
Motion is second. Roll call vote, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes. Moving on to Item 11, ordinances. Item 11A, consideration discussion and possible adoption of ordinance number 3534, an ordinance for temporary turnaround easement closure.
Trevor.
Thank you. This is an easement closure that's been submitted by David and Misty Yonts. And the property is located a quarter-mile south of Jasper Street and one-quarter mile east of Olive Avenue. This particular easement provides a temporary turnaround for the south stub of Indianwood Avenue and the Bentley Village subdivision. City ordinances were updated, specifically the subdivision regulations, on February 9, 2018, that no longer require this turnaround. The development services had reviewed the documents, and they recommend acceptance of the utility easement closure. As such, staff recommends to adopt ordinance number 3534 and approve the emergency clause.
Move to adopt ordinance 3534.
Second.
Motion is second. Is there any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes. And finally, emergency clause, please.
Sorry.
Make a motion for emergency clause.
Second.
Motion is second to the emergency clause. Roll call vote, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes. Finally, ordinances. Item 11B, consideration discussion and possible adoption of ordinance number 3535, an ordinance admitting Chapter 10, Fire Prevention and Protection, Article 1.
Trevor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor and Council. This ordinance, 3535, updates the manual fees specifically for the fireworks permit fee. It removes it from the ordinance and it sends it to the manual fees, and it also updates it so it's accurate. And so, instead of $20, it'll be $21 in the manual fees. Staff recommends you adopt ordinance number 3535 and approve the emergency clause.
Is there a motion in that regard?
Make a motion to adopt ordinance number 3535.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes. And...
Move for the emergency clause, second.
Motion is second. Roll call vote, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes. Moving on to Item 12, remarks and inquiries by the governing body members. I would like to thank all the members of our veteran community who attended this meeting. I know you did so for the proclamations, but you were tough enough to survive wars, you were tough enough to survive this meeting, so thank you. Thank you for being here and honoring us with your presence, and thank you for your service. I also would like to mention, Mayor Thurmond indicated he would have loved to be here. He's doing some work for the city as part of our work on a committee. He serves with National League of Cities. And I wanted, I told him I'd make sure everyone knew that he regretted not being here. Is there any other comments? All right, move on to Item 13, remarks and updates by the city manager.
Vice Mayor, Members, Council, good evening. Just a few things I wanted to mention under the consent agenda. Since tonight you approved a second amendment to provide some funding for Mark Fry to continue to try to raise funds for the operations of the proposed creative arts-type center that we're looking at. I did get a report from Mark that told me that he will be ready to come before the council sometime in, I would say, October, November. He is having some success, and I do believe that the council, we've talked about trying to make it a decision whether we're going to go forward with the project or we're not by sometimes around the end of the year. And Mark is having some success, both locally and nationally, raising some funds. And so, obviously, council, with the recommendation from my office, going to have to make a decision on whether we go forward with that project, and I'm still targeting the end of this year. I also wanted to mention, Rocky mentioned that we did award street striping. I think that's very important, that we have a program for striping our streets, doing our islands and so forth, and that was a very large contract. Also, we did award a contract, the council did, I should say, for ash, essentially from Dallas all the way to Detroit, and we're going to do some additional work and also some sidewalk work. That is a bond project that we're going to be completing. We also are under design for First Street as well, which I think we're going to let that contract sometime early, early next year. So, we continue to, as you can see, the type of work that the street and Stormwater is going to do, we're also awarding contracts for that work. I too want to thank the veterans that came out this evening and for the council for recognizing those two very important, basically, the BJ Day and also for Purple Hearts. I apologize, I was running a little bit late, had to pick my wife up from the airport, so I certainly hated to miss it, but I'm certainly glad all of you did make it, make it out this evening to support the city council in the end of passing those resolutions. And then finally, I'd like for Krista to come forward in just a second here. We're 20 days in a wake-up from our general obligation bond package vote. We continue to do a lot of public education, and we still have a lot more to do. We still have civitans, Rotary, senior citizens, the alumni for our Citizens Public Safety, Police Academy, a few other, a few other functions as well, to make sure that we cover all of our community, make sure that folks have questions, to get those questions. And a very important piece is going out this week, and I wanted Krista to talk about that. All the residents, all the homes, I should say, in Broken Arrow are going to receive a copy, so I'm going to ask her to update the council for those folks that do have Channel 24 on Cox, they'll be able to see what she's about to present.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, Council members. I'm very excited to talk about this voter information guide. This is a 24-page booklet that will be mailed out later this week. It should arrive in people's mailboxes either Wednesday or Thursday. And it is a great, easy-to-read document that really details all of the six propositions, the projects in the six propositions. So, there's also a map at the back on page 20 and 21 that really gives you a bird's-eye view of where the different street projects will be going. I've already gotten a comment already on Nextdoor. I posted an early preview of this because somebody had questioned just how transparent we were being, and so I had to inform them that this is going out in mailboxes this very week. On page two, you know, we get a lot of comments about the various names, street names in Broken Arrow. There's actually a guide here that lists the Broken Arrow name versus other street names. So, I think people are going to find this very useful, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions?
Did a good job.
Thank you.
Well done.
That's all I have, Vice Mayor, Members, Council. Glad to answer any questions you have.
All right, we'll move on to Item 4, well, we move on to Item 14, executive session. I would entertain a motion to go into brief recess so we can enter beta and beta.
So, move.
Sorry. Motion is second. Roll call vote, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes. I call the meeting of the, the August 7, 2018 meeting of the Broken Arrow Municipal Authority to Order, would ask for a roll call vote, please. A roll call, roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Here.
Parks?
Here.
Lester?
Here.
Udi?
Here.
Thurmond?
All right, moving on to Item 3, consideration of the consent agenda. Are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda?
Move for approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion is second, having been made. Roll call vote, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes. There were no items removed from the consent agenda. There are no public hearings or general authority business.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion is second, having been made. Roll call vote, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes. I now call this meeting of the Broken Arrow Economic Development Authority to Order, would ask for roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Here.
Parks?
Here.
Lester?
Here.
Udi?
Here.
Thurmond?
Next item on the agenda is consideration of the consent agenda. Are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda?
Move for approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion is second, having been made. Roll call vote, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes. And number five, general authority business, 5A, approval and authorization to execute Resolution Number 1114, a resolution of the Broken Arrow Economic Development Authority, accepting a general warranty deed from the city of Broken Arrow, Norm Stevens.
Counsel, it's the same authority, it's the same information that was presented to council. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Is this where you tell Steve he should have stayed? He did have some questions.
I need at least one other person to speak, or I'm going to be confused.
We'll show him.
Is there a motion in this regard?
Make a motion to approve and authorize execution of Resolution Number 1114.
Second.
Motion is second, having been made. Seeing no further discussion, roll call vote, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes. There is no executive session. I'd entertain one more motion.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion is second, having been made. Roll call vote, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes. We are back in the city council, we're back in city council session. Is there a motion to take a brief recess so we can enter executive session?
A rest, too.
And a rest, too.
Yes, and a rest.
Second, yes. Oh, second, I'm sorry.
A motion of sorts and a second, having been made, is a roll call vote, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
[inaudible] 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 [inaudible]